I recall a meeting to order, 7 o'clock, April 19th, 2022. We have a, we'll do roll call around when I get done. We're going to do approval of agenda, approval of minutes from April 5th. And then we're going to talk real quick about the mission statement. I think it's pretty clear. There probably won't have much discussion there. Discussion on the proper cleanup ordinance, which we have. And then we're going to do a little discussion on the ARPA funds. It's not going to be very lengthy on that. I want to get some ideas on that. And then public comment and we'll adjourn. Look for a motion to approve a agenda.
I approve.
Got a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go around the table.
Oh, okay.
Because we got one on camera, so we had to go around the table.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
How are you?
So we're going around. We had a first, we had a motion and a second on approval of agenda.
Yep, approved.
So it was, did Megan, you said yes?
Yes.
Stacy's?
Stacy, yes, yes.
Michelle was. Jimmy, you said yes?
Yes.
Fred?
Fred, yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Now I want to do, we'll go right around the table, just a quick introduction, just so in case anybody's watching.
Jim Winchester.
Brad Miller.
I'm John Bashi.
Megan Randall.
Stacy Boxer.
Michelle Tackgrove.
All right. Now approval of minutes. Everybody got a chance to quick read them? You got a packet, Michelle? You didn't get anything on?
No.
Really not?
No. And I, and I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't vote.
Okay.
I believe that I revised the ordinance in the, I don't see why it's not here. It's been sent out to everybody, right? The one that I had been working on.
Yeah, we have the ordinance here.
I think it's included in the.
Oh, is that one with all the lines?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Yeah, and this is just the approval from.
Yeah, because there's a suggestion in the minutes that any accidentally spilt litter or trash will be properly removed. I'm not sure that I got that in there, but there's, it's to that effect, you know?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Everybody's had a chance. I'll look for a motion on minutes.
I move the motion.
A second? Okay, first a second. All in favor, Megan?
Aye.
Michelle?
I can't vote.
Oh, that's why you can't vote on this one. They had to remind me a couple of times because of.
That's all right.
Just say abstain.
Yeah.
Abstain.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Brad? And I, myself is an aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to mission statement. You have a copy of that. Did you get a, did you see the mission statement?
No, I haven't gotten anything.
Okay. Basically, we were just tasked by the select board to do a mission statement. Brian made it real easy for us, sent over Brad Abur's mission statement. So we're just going to submit that. Basically, it's, all it is is a.
I'll read it. Do you want me to read it to you?
I believe there's already a mission statement from the town of panel.
Yes, but they wanted us, what they, basically what they're doing is getting each board to just throw something back into them so they can look at it. But for whatever, I don't.
Michelle, it says, "The planning commission is charged with setting the overall policy and goals for land development and use, land use in town. The primary functions of the commission are to prepare and amend the town plan and land use regulations."
Sounds about right.
Sounds like what I always thought we were supposed to be doing. So it's fine with me.
So if that's, everybody's, yeah, if everybody's agreeance on that, we'll just look for a motion on that to submit that.
I move the motion.
Okay. A second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Yep, you can vote on this one. Jimmy, it was an aye?
Yeah.
And Fred?
Aye.
And myself is an aye. So that, we can submit that into the select board now. Okay. Moving right along. So discussion on the property cleanup. Now, we went over, we went over the ordinance last meeting. Get you up to speed, Michelle. We went over it. We had some things that had to get taken out.
Yeah, I have, I have Fred's version that he had emailed, like yesterday or something, so I do have that.
Yep. Okay, you got the other ones that's all the lines through it?
I do.
Okay, those are all the things that we were discussing that we took out based on some wordage or the way some things were worded. We didn't want in there, so, so basically, that's the way the ordinance would lay out now. Does everybody have a chance to read through it a little bit?
Okay, I don't understand why you took screening out.
Let me work.
On, on the second page, the definitions. You crossed off, oh, I see, you just changed, I get it.
I changed.
Never mind, got it, got it, got it, I'm sorry.
I took out.
So you just relettered it, good.
So you had to move the.
Yeah, and we had removed all the, right, thank you for doing that.
Junk vehicles are out of this?
Yeah, we just.
Yes.
I just don't think that there's enough agreement on junk vehicles. I know that.
Well, they already have an ordinance.
There's an ordinance, there's not an ordinance. There's a bylaw in place, and there's also the state statute. There's only supposed to be three unregistered vehicles per property. Some kind of, unless you got a permit as a, I don't know what.
You'd have to have a junk guard or something like that.
Right, but so I.
Are we concerned with any environmental situations from these?
That would be, that would be a health issue if there's something like that leaking. That would be more even possibly the state having to, if it was a complaint, if somebody said, hey, I think there's fuel and oil leaking. Fred probably would get a call from Matt, the health officer.
But you'd have to go on some of these property though, wouldn't you?
Well, you'd have a complaint.
Yeah, but had to have a complaint on it.
Okay, so here's a situation. My daughter and her husband were thinking of moving back to Vermont, and we were looking at some properties. And one of the properties, I got there before the real estate agent, and I just happened to be walking along the driveway. And I looked down this steep hill, and there's probably 10 or 12 cars. Some of them are classic, some of them are just junk. I don't know how long they're sitting there. They could be sitting there for 20 years. And I'm sure they'll be sitting there for another 20 years if nobody cleans this up. Nobody can see this.
Well, so they're screened.
So it's screened, okay? But as far as I'm concerned, it's an environmental hazard down the road. You know, there's going to be leakage of oil and whatnot.
Well, you know.
It's off the beaten track, is that what you mean?
It's way off, way off. Nobody would ever see this.
Right.
If you aren't in the situation.
Well, I guess you could put in a complaint.
It's really not a health, it's not a health, border health issue.
No, it's environmental.
We would primarily deal with, primarily with rental, rental properties. Issues that deal with rental properties. I think your, your best step would be to contact somebody in the environmental division of the state of Vermont. They have people that travel the whole state.
Okay.
Dealing with stuff like.
Because that's what.
Illegal.
I remember Tim Gilbert did that up on.
Okay, I didn't mean to divert from the topic.
No, no, no.
Right.
You have a real estate agent? You had a real estate agent? I wonder why they didn't mention it. I mean.
Wanted to sell the property.
Like to see somebody clean. I think they would say to the owner of the property, I'm trying to sell you land, why don't you clean this up?
Is it the property that you were looking at?
No.
Oh, it's the neighbor.
An adjacent property. But it was blatant.
See, as far as junk goes, people would say, you know, some things might look like junk and stuff. It's, it might be a treasure to that person that owns them.
Well, that's why we said that about screening.
Right, that's, that's the hard part about getting rid of that kind of stuff.
Well, the same thing with.
But still, as far as unregistered.
So if you've got garbage, literally food garbage. That's, that's what we're trying to clean up. And they screen that, then it's okay?
No, no, no.
That's not okay.
It's stated in the ordinance.
Right.
It says that they have to put it in a bin or something with a lid and that leaving it out in plastic bags.
We're hoping to get rid of that.
So the screening is just for metal objects that people don't, don't think it's good looking.
Right.
And as Fred pointed out, and, you know, I, I think you and I agreed, I think I agreed with what you were saying. You read the definition at the last meeting of what junk actually is, according to the dictionary. And I think it's a, it's a useful word, but Fred pointed out, and, you know, I talked to different people after you said that. And they agreed with me that it is a pejorative term. It's, it's negative, it's judgy.
We're, we're in changing times now.
Yeah, and some of the people, some of the people who, who are the worst offenders would be, right, non-offenders.
Maybe not, maybe not even them so much. It's like, you know, the use of the word as it's often used, I think, is, is a form of judgment.
Yes, it is, yes, exactly.
If somebody's.
And so we, yeah, we don't want to come.
Sometimes it's the best they can do. And it's like, then it really hurts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not always the case, but it's.
No, sometimes.
So rather than, rather than use, it's, it's, the word is always, it's usefulness, I think.
Well, I don't know. It's a pretty solid word. Good old Anglo-Saxon word, but however, in this instance, I, I accepted your opinion because you've been really good at doing this work, so.
So basically, this now is drawn up pretty decent, I think.
We can go.
I, I think going forward here, what we're looking at is, we're going to submit this to the select board. They got to go and review it. If they want to sit down with us, we'll just put it in. If they want to sit down with us and go over that, we can try to do a joint meeting to go over it. And they're going to have to hash it out, look at it. They think, if they want to go forward with it, then they're going to have to have meetings on it. They have to have public meetings, so.
I think the one thing maybe I, where I took a liberty is coming up with a title for it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I struck junk and junk vehicles.
Oh, yes.
And changed it to outdoor storage of household trash.
Good, okay.
Yeah, that was good.
I think that's fine.
I mean, does there anybody have any problems with it like it is now? Or anybody in favor of submitting that?
So I just want to.
I think it's as good as it's going to get.
Right.
I mean, they're going to probably, they might hack it apart some more.
You could go over this and over and over for months.
Right.
And try to make it better. We're not going to make this perfect.
No.
I think the bottom line is, who's going to enforce it and how's it going to get enforced?
That's, that's the select board's got to try to figure out. That's not for us to figure out, we just got to submit this forward. Go ahead, Jimmy.
No, why don't we let the selectmen slice and dice it?
I, I, there was one thing, Fred, I, I put it in because I think it was Mike Gardner said that he wanted to be sure about the, the process of how we deal with this. So upon receiving a complaint, I don't know why you took that out.
I think, I took it out because I think that would be something that needs to be discussed and more depth.
Okay, yeah.
Because it's really, it's, health officer, zoning administrator will perform an inspection. That's, I think that's going outside, outside of the bounds.
Of your job.
And, you know, I guess, receiving a complaint.
Yeah, it could be.
What form?
You know, written complaint.
Stop me on the street and say, I don't like this.
Right, right, right.
I gotta go investigate.
Why don't you get something about that guy?
I think.
Or the people who say, you complained to me, what about that guy down the road? Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
At first I thought, like, everybody that has a position in the town maybe could enforce it. But then that starts getting dangerous territory.
No, I heard, the way I heard Mike and you talking about it, I thought it was pretty clear that it was you, Mike, well, I shouldn't say it. The zoning administrator, the health officer, and the, and the police. That would be the people involved in enforcing.
Right.
So we don't want to bother with it, we'll let the, let the planning.
Yeah, let them determine.
Lay it out.
They're going to do that.
I will definitely give my input when they start talking about that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we should.
We might, we might even be able to, or they might even be able to put somebody on specifically for this. You know, I mean, this is a temporary thing, just to, there's going to be some enforcement, whether it be a cop on or somebody else just take a temporary job to do this. I don't, I don't know how they're going to go about that.
I don't know, I'm not.
We got to have some, the enforcement is what's going to have to come along.
I have not been impressed with the enforcement of the police that we've had in the past. As I said, I showed them an actual video of somebody dumping trash in the woods up on, up the mountain up there. You know, they're actually taking it out of their car and throwing it in the woods. And they, he knew who it was too, but he didn't, he said it wasn't, he couldn't use it, didn't have a license plate visible. And, you know, so, I mean, there's always some, and then they pass it on, oh, pass it on to the, who's the guy who handles, you know, what's his name? He does, when, when somebody shoots or they kill a deer or something, who's that guy? Game warden, the game warden. Yeah, he passed it on to the game warden as if he would have anything to say about it. So, I mean, there's a lot of that kind of, there's a lot of that.
You know, I was seeing a town in New Jersey has had numerous people dumping in a certain spot. They put up cameras.
Yeah, well, we did that.
And now they're fining people, and it's way paying for more than the cameras, okay? They're making, the town is actually making money on this.
Well, we, as a panel proud, which is a little group that does litter pickup and so on, we put up two game cameras. But, you know, it was, it's a big hassle to monitor them. And you've got to get them set just right so that it.
You get a license?
You got to make sure you catch.
If you don't have a license.
The last selectment meeting, they discussed putting up cameras.
Good, good.
Knocked it.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, I think they're, they're taking steps forward too, so.
And I can tell that, you know.
How did, how did we come up with the fines? And what is the waiver?
That was just in the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
What is the waiver?
Original template.
And that's just a template of it? It's not, that could change.
What does a 50 dollar waiver mean? A $100 waiver?
I don't know anything, I don't know.
Basically, just if they pay it in half, they paid it ahead of time or whatever, they could, they could waiver some of the money and not charge so much, but.
Oh, if it's paid within a certain days versus?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So again, all of those things probably will change. I know Mike was looking at set fees for doing some of this like that. I think they raised, before you got on it, I think, they raised the amount for dumping off the side of the road here. Or if it blew out of your car, if they catch that, they can hit you with a fine on that. And that one all went up.
You know, since people know that, that I'm working on this, people have been telling me they see junk flying off of, I mean, trash flying off of a Casella trucks.
There's an ordinance for that.
I know it.
With fines, so it's up to the police.
So are people supposed to make a complaint about that? Like write the license down and?
I think Dennis, I mean, Mr. Harris is going to discuss it.
Say something.
It's definitely the wrong thing to be doing.
Yeah, yeah.
You should definitely.
I would love to catch somebody right handed.
Get the description of the person, the tags on the car.
Believe me, I'm out on those notes every day.
Nobody wants, what everybody always says, nobody wants telltale. But to get somebody's things cleaned up, if you see somebody dumping, I mean, as you see on, if you watch videos, you know, YouTube videos and stuff, that people, oh, you're doing that wrong. And I pull out your phone and go over and film them right in their face if you have to. Hey, let them know they're doing something wrong and they got caught, period, you know, I mean.
I, I've never caught anyone. I have, there's.
Somebody posted something on Facebook about a month ago where somebody threw out some trash along the side of the road. And her mail, her mail was in there.
Yeah.
And they said, you better come back and fix this.
Jim Gilbert did that once. He took a bag of trash to the original owner, and she, she claimed it wasn't hers, that she gave it to a garbage man.
Well, it could have been. That's what the state police.
It's hard to say that, but it's, I mean, it's, it can be, it can be, you never know.
So, yeah. So I think that this is, so we're, we're leaving enforcement, which is my intention as well. I just think maybe we want to have some kind of, like Fred's, maybe we want to write something in there upon receiving a written complaint?
Why don't we let the select?
Definitely a verifiable complaint.
Written and verifiable.
You know, a lot of people are hesitant to come forward, put their name on it, but really, you're asking somebody to enforce it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're asking somebody else to.
To put their body on the.
Get up close and personal.
Right.
I would, I would think we should leave that up to the select board as far as any kind of.
Okay, so you'll mention it to them, okay.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I will definitely have a lot to say when, when they get to that point.
Yeah, I'll be in there too.
I will too.
I just want to make sure.
Since I wrote a lot of this.
If you get it to go forward, probably I'll be there.
You're involved on the select board?
No, I'm not. I just go to them.
Well, this is all I do besides.
So as far as the section four, which is the part that really what I, coupled together, duty of owners and occupants, any, that's, I've been, worked that over very thoroughly. And I, I think, I think as it stands, it's pretty good. You know, I think we're trying to address two things, that the garbage that people are leaving in their yards and in their pickup trucks and stuff. And the, the problem out on Route 7.
No, I think it's.
Potential for a flea market by somebody, anyway, no names named. So I think that's what we're addressing, and I hope that that covers it somewhat.
Well, I would be, I guess we could move it along. I think everybody kind of in favor, so if we want to make a motion to move this forward.
I make a move.
Okay.
I second it.
Second that. Round table, Megan?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Michelle?
Michelle.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, we're moving that forward to the select board, and we will let them tear it up if they need to, or hopefully approval without too, too much tear up. But, and if they, if they need that when you send that up, if they need a, want to meet with us on that, that would be, we can do that. We'll just set up a data meeting with them or whatever, we'll just join it.
Yeah, I would like to forward it on that.
Okay, moving on to discussion of the ARPA funds. This will be pretty quick. I don't think we need to do a lot on it, but I wanted to put it on the schedule for, to discuss. My question is, what kind of a number do we think we should have set aside? If we could do this, it's, it's all going to be up to the select board. But I wanted to throw some kind of number at the board. So if we say.
Wait, wait, to set aside to?
Some ARPA funds to help out the town. So if this, if this ordinance goes through.
Oh, oh, help with this.
Providing that that ordinance goes through.
So, yeah.
And everything gets set. We already know, we've been discussing this for long enough, we already know that there's a lot of little problems around town.
Yeah.
Those might need addressed with some funding from the town to get cleaned up first. We already know, I know this from just listening to the select board and some of the, and Tom Shuey at the dump, that they're picking up over on the back roads here, where the dump out places have been. And that, that's a big cost coming out of that.
Yeah.
So every time.
So you're saying the highway department is.
Right, the highway department and stuff's going in, cleaning up, that's going to the dump, it's costing us every time that happens. If we can set aside, I don't know if they'll be able to do it on this, on the ARPA funds, but I want to see if we could set something going forward. If they can approve to do that, and a number. So if we could throw something at them, my, my feeling was maybe like 10,000 or something like that. I don't know how the board would feel, I just wanted to.
What is the town getting, a million?
They've already, they got two halves apparently. The first half's already been spoken for, so it's, I think it was just about a million, a half a million or so roughly. That's already been spoken for, they've already got things going. But the second half, when that comes, there's going to be roughly another half million there. And they're going to try to figure out what they're going to do with that. So if we can grab a little bit, I don't know if they can even get a lot.
So that's the job of the planning commission, is to decide what to do with.
No, no, not, no.
The select board.
Select board, not us. Michelle, you had some really good, Michelle had some really good ideas of, kind of, how to encourage, encourage people.
Well, I know, I know before we had talked about, you know, having like a dumpster day type, you know, a couple of dumpster things. I guess we need to find out how much, you know, dumpsters would cost, you know.
For the person to be there.
Yeah, and have a person, you know, and, and it'd be like certain, you know, work with Casellas, they're like, okay, you know, drop off at this time, pick up, you know, at this time. And just, you know, have somebody there that checks IDs as people are coming up with trash, you know. Put them in the more problem areas where it's easier for them to, to get there. You know, do we want to do anything where we purchase permits for people to go to the dump? You know, people that can't, haven't been able to.
A scholarship kind of thing?
Yes, yes, something, something like that. And then you were just.
Don't say dump, transfer station.
Yeah, and then.
Most people say dump.
Most people say junk and most people say dump.
But, you know, there's a place in Palm called the Beach, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Down there, there's a bunch of mattresses, television.
Oh, yeah, there are.
That's a place you're not going to patrol very well. Not many people get down there, they don't feel comfortable down there. Somebody owns it, and there's probably 50 other places in town similar.
Sure.
Right.
As you say, you went to a place to buy and saw some property.
Right.
You know, I kind of passed around Palm the other day and looked at some places that, quite disgusting. And what are we going to do about it? You know? I mean, if you start picking up, if you start picking up people.
Right.
And I've done this.
That's what's going to happen, we got to just, it's men are getting on them until we get out.
It's education. I think the secret is education. The land is valuable, they're not making it anymore. Palm's sitting in a good spot right now.
Gorgeous views, gorgeous country.
Well, we, we talked about a few, few, a few meetings ago, we talked about that, and Fred mentioned it too, is, is just education on what you can bring to the dump right now.
Right.
People are throwing out TVs and that kind of stuff, and it's, some of that stuff is free to go to the dump.
Yeah.
So, you know, why throwing it away?
Why throwing it in the woods?
If you can travel to go dump it over there, you can travel to go dump it over there.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, I remember.
They don't know it's free.
Because I, like, I have Casella pickup here, I don't know what I can take to the dump. You know, what I, what I think is something, I call and ask, but it'd be great if there was some sort of listing, you know, one on the website, you know, that kind of thing. And then, you know, so you're talking about like the problem areas, you said with the highway department has been cleaning up?
Yes, some locations with pull offs.
I mean, it's.
Oh, pull offs, yeah.
I mean, as part, as part of the, the budgeting, do we, you know, go to them and say, how, how, you know, pick out some spots and say, how many hours do you think this is going to take? to take and, and get that kind of money and, and have them doing the cleanup and it's getting done.
Right, and that's why I'm thinking, because the ARPA funds are coming, so.
Yeah.
If I, I want to go there and just see if we can set aside some money. I don't know what amount they would be able to do.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm going to suggest it from us here as a suggestion of what we think and we take.
I make a motion against for $10,000.
Okay.
Just start there.
Yep. And it might, it might be less, it might be more, we might have.
I mean, wait a minute, it's not really.
I'm just putting out a number.
Why not put 50,000 out?
We could put 50,000, it could be 100,000, but I'm just.
I don't, I don't think we really know.
We don't.
What the number is, so why are we putting a number on something?
Well, because we're.
We.
We're just making something up.
We need to, we need to talk to the, to the.
Yeah.
The highway department, right?
I mean, I could talk to Casella and get the prices on dumpsters, so then we would at least have that, you know, somebody can talk to the highway department, find out how many hours and, you know, how much do you guys make an hour to be able to do this? Because, I mean, all these little things, they add up quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Where it'd be like, oh, 1,000 was not enough.
Yeah.
I've talked to them, they don't really like picking it up because they're going to be dumping it again. I know the price of dumpsters, I got two of them and Casella takes most anything. Go ahead. Being there's a secret there, why don't you get some dumpsters and pay for them?
Tom Shuey's going to give us green update costs after.
Yeah. Did they have a cost of it? Did you, did you hear any cost of the, the last pickup that they did when they went and picked up around?
No, but there was five bags, so we can kind of do the math, they're 250 each.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a daily, a daily thing.
So, I mean, I could give you a rough number. I, I don't think our number needs to be really high, it's just a starting point and they can change that year to year.
Talking about putting maybe four or five dumpsters in specific locations.
Well, that's.
To make it easy for people to get rid of.
Just for certain days, like maybe three days a year or something, Michelle, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, something.
In addition to the free dump day.
And we have, we do have to be careful of what we're doing because we know how that goes. I've had dumpsters before and everybody wants to drive, throw it in, so you ever had to either watch them really close or so, it's just somebody's not randomly going, throwing it in without.
Maybe they have to have cameras. Yeah, I was just going to say.
Right.
The selectmen is working on that.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But this is dumpsters that they're going to put out.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and that's basically, this is what I want.
Hot spots.
To get the ARPA funds a little bit, that would cover some of that cost.
Okay, well, I, I just would, I don't, I'm getting a little, we keep saying we, you know, like it's the planning commission, we're not getting the money, it's.
Right.
They're going to set aside the money.
They're going to try and get it.
Right, they're going to set it aside for this purpose.
Right.
Well, we can recommend that strongly. And I think that the quality of life in town, the town of Powell, would go up a, a lot if people, if there was a, you know, a lot less of this trashing. I really do, it's such a beautiful place.
I think it'll happen, we're getting closer.
And people's land, property values will go up too.
I think we need to really offer to come up with a list of ideas to the select board if they want to ask us, if they want to charge us in doing that. And we can come up with a list of possible uses for, for, for some additional ARPA funds as if they come in.
Right.
If and when they come in.
And they might want to.
We could draw up a list of, you know, including what we just talked about and a few other, other things.
What, what other things are you thinking?
Well, I'm, cameras one.
I hope they aren't going to tell us where we're going to put the cameras, so.
You know what, though?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the town as it is now, based on the history of what, what we have here for housing, for low income housing. Old, old, old trailers.
Small spaces.
Old trailers, whatever. A bank won't lend, a bank won't lend on them anymore. You can't just tear it apart because you have to get asbestos checked, so these things are going to be getting abandoned or they're going to be, that's who are going to be living in them forever and not living well.
And not having much space to put.
At some point, the town's going to be faced with the dilemma of how to get rid of these things.
When they take them out for taxes, yeah.
And if you, if you've got a, a pocket of money somewhere to help with that, to pay for asbestos checks and mitigation.
Oh, I see, so we should ask for more than 10,000, we should, yes.
Coming back to this thing, we, we talked about the mission statement, but we didn't talk about the goals of this planning commission. I think that's what they wanted us to do, was to come up with some goals for the coming year, you know, beyond the junk.
Right, something that we're trying to do, right.
So I think that's.
That should be a.
I think this, this ordinance, the, the trash, household trash ordinance that came about, we kind of like started having a discussion without them asking us to have it.
Well, I don't know, I felt like Mike and you guys were.
The, the, the town plan was accomplished, the bylaws were accomplished, so then those two things were accomplished, so what are we, what are we meeting every month for?
No, but I mean, I thought that you and Mike and Tom were really, you know, I, I think when there's political will for something like this, it's time to jump up.
Oh, yeah.
Because people like Jimmy can tell you, for 40 years, people have been complaining about this.
We got one overarching goal, maybe be responsive to, to the changing needs of the town.
Yeah. Well, people, I, I don't know, I hear, because of my position in, in Powell Proud and, and here, people complain to me all the time about the, they tell me how beautiful it is, how amazing that you go, I went for a walk up, what is it, Cold Storage Road the other day?
Yep.
Holy smokes, it's gorgeous up there and trash all along the road and I picked it up, you know, as I walked. But, you know, there's so many places that you turn around and you're just startled at how gorgeous it is and that's what should be our image, not this junk along Route seven. That should not be Powell's image and, and so.
And Powell's not unique as, as far as that goes.
No, but.
It's everywhere.
It's pretty bad.
But we live here.
Oh, yeah.
And we care a lot.
Instead of, people don't know that it's free to dump a television set, that's why they're dumping it on the side of the road because they think it's, they're going to charge them at the dump.
They should know that people mine those types of things.
And that's just going to, that's just going to be.
So maybe, maybe we need to get that out to the public.
So that would be another thing, that education.
Right, some kind of education.
More education.
And that's, I mean, the board's going to come up, the, the select board's going to come up with the ideas of what they're going to have to do with that.
Right.
Alls I want to really do is throw something at them and say, if we got 10,000 to work with to start with, that, that'll be a start. They might want, they might throw 50 at it.
They might throw 100.
I don't know, because they have to, they control it, we don't.
Yeah.
I was in the motion.
But he made a motion, if we have a second on that, I'll just throw it in as 10 for now and we'll.
Don't matter.
And we'll see what they have to say. They're going to, they're going to.
Just say set aside money, you know, for education. There is, every year.
It's just going to be a small list of things.
Every year, the, the transfer station that Tom Shuey has in the, in the town.
Right.
The, the report, the town report, he explained, you know, there, it's right there and I believe it's on the website too, isn't it, Tara?
Who reads that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Who reads that?
Well, then how, I mean.
People go to town meeting.
Right.
People go to town meeting, read that.
Town meeting.
I don't think a lot of my customers don't read those things.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I live in a.
I mean, so how do we reach people? I don't know, talk, maybe we could do outreach with kids too, you know?
We try to.
It's to school. I think just getting literature, send it out, maybe, maybe getting it out to the schools and stuff like that.
And it's, it's bringing it back. Yeah, the kids would bring it back, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah, just, it could probably, I mean, if board agrees with it, it's just a matter of making copies and say, here, we're going to give them to school.
Maybe inform people a little bit at a time, you know, ease into it.
Well, yeah, you know, I like.
That's what we're going to do.
Get the public talking about the subject a little bit.
Well, I, I like the idea that, I think it was you and Michelle were talking about this, about having a six month, you know, where you pass the ordinance and then you give people some time, you know, to, to get things done before you start nailing them.
Right, yeah, that's, I'm sure that's going to happen. Again, they're, they're going to have, select board's going to do a bit of that detailing of that, but.
Hopefully it's not another 40 years.
I think, I think. I think that's why we're trying to move this along.
Yeah, I think it's just so important, just, yeah, while, while there's some political will right now and people are, you know, getting a little outraged.
It's discussing the ERV, it's discussing the selectmen, it's discussing the stores, it's been discussed in all over town.
All over.
Mm-hmm.
I hear it.
For a long time.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I've heard it at town meeting.
That are starting to think about, let's do something positive.
Yeah.
And that's.
And something we all agree on.
Yeah.
So.
Regardless of where we stand in the.
Well, I have a, a motion, is there a second on that?
What's the motion?
Whether for the, including $10,000 or for passing the whole.
Okay.
Right.
I'll, I'll accept with the motion.
You're going to keep it?
Yeah, just a number. I don't care if you want to add some material.
Right, they're probably going to change it, I just want.
How about an estimated or use some.
What are you going to estimate?
Why don't we just take a motion to, to set funds aside to help with.
Sounds good. If we get some money, we get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Another possibility is.
At least 10,000?
Just to simply offer.
Doesn't matter.
Make an offer to the select board to help create a list of possible uses for ARPA funds and then.
That's what they're going to work.
And then those things, those things can come from, from that, but I think to start with, I, I don't think us making a decision and doing that.
Oh, no, there's, we're not, we have no authority.
Hit them with a request for 10, 10 grand.
I don't see why.
We, we offer, we offer to.
But we already have some suggestions, we could just.
Right, I'm, that's all I'm going to do is submit to them that we're going to, we're asking.
This is what people have talked to us about.
This number to start with, maybe, possibly, and this is what we'd like to do with that or what we, we would suggest to them to do with that, that stuff.
Yeah. We'd just like it to be taken into consideration.
Right, that's all.
What do you think?
I'm just throwing it as a consideration to them.
Yeah.
And that's it. We, we don't have any control of what is going to happen with it, we're, it's our suggestion to them.
Yeah, that's what we're supposed to do, suggestions.
So we have, we have a second on that?
No, I rescinded it.
Oh, you rescinded it? You don't want to put any money, so, but I think suggestion can.
I'm going to, I'm making a motion that we offer, make an offer to the select board to sit down in a meeting, or several meetings, and put a list of possible uses for.
I think we should make it clear that we already have a lot of ideas.
When the money comes, the money isn't coming yet.
When we word the offer to them, we could put that in there that we, we.
We have discussed as a group, we have discussed many ideas for.
We have suggestions.
I think to move forward, I think we need to.
Send this.
We can do that.
Yeah, just send them, send them an offer to, if they want, if they want to charge us to do that or give us, give us the task, task us to do that, come up with a list.
Make a task.
Possibly, yeah.
Yep.
I think, I think we should stop stalling so much.
Well, no, well, that's, that's the way government works, I've learned, I've learned a lot about government over the past few years.
Well, I would like to move, did we?
Well, he made a motion, so we'd have a second on that to do it. He made a motion on that.
The motion was to.
Make an offer to the select board.
To the select board to.
Start creating a list of possible uses for ARPA funds.
For ARPA.
As regards.
Including.
Crash analysis for.
Well, I think they're on the way with cameras, stop, okay? That, that's what they talked about the last meeting.
Right.
So cameras, we could quick put dumpsters around, we could get, so that's the ground floor for a basis for starting something. And if they can say, see their way to give us some funding, then thank you very much.
Right, good job. So I, I think we're.
So we need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Good.
All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Fred? Aye. And I'm an aye.
So now, what do we decide about this?
That's going forward.
It's going forward, we had it, we've already passed it.
It's out of our hands.
Good job, guys.
Is there anybody in public comment? Okay, then I'll look for a motion.
I think this is really going to be.
Unless anybody questions.
I, I think it's a step in the right direction, I'm really pleased.
I would just like to bring one, one thing up.
Sure.
So this is kind of off the deep end, but, you know, a lot of people will complain about taxes are high in the town. I think the town should bring in more businesses.
We worked on that in the past year, I know they've been going backwards on that because it got rid of the EDC bill, uh, board.
Environmental, I mean, economic development.
Economic development stuff, but then they started doing some other stuff, so.
Are we? I think, I, I think the planning board.
Get that to go.
I think the last handing board, when we wrote the town plan, this was our number one goal, to be friendly to business.
Yeah, I think.
I think.
Bylaws are.
I think in the past. I'm talking about trying to bring in something like Costco or BJ's on Route seven, there's plenty of property there.
Right.
And that would be beneficial to this town.
We, we have discussed that kind of stuff several, several times and I think this board.
We can go back and revisit them.
Years ago, we, we, did we submit for municipal planning grant for, for economic development?
Development, sure.
Oh, I don't.
The economic development plan board has done this.
Right.
Industry, industry, which would include every, you know, everything.
Well, is anything being done, Tom?
Yeah, I think there is.
There's some things that were being done, but at, at the same time, I think some things got stalled because.
Better places, listen.
Stuff that got put in.
If it comes through to Vermont, goes to Montpelier.
Well.
They, they, they handed out, kinda like, we got a racetrack down there, it could've been, it could've been a Costco.
So that's another.
We've discussed it for a few years.
Well, you know what, you guys, this town, the way it looks right now, does not attract big business, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I disagree with that, I think this is a perfect portion of, of the state, it's between.
No, I mean, the location is great, I'm just saying.
You've got people in North Adams, Bennington, they come up, you got Manchester.
Sure, no, it's a great location.
This is kind of in the middle of nowhere, and that's actually a good thing.
Right.
It's also a good location for a, a train, uh, you know, train stop, for the, the trains to be extended all the way to Albany.
Yeah.
However, I mean.
What, what are you gonna do when you get?
This is something we can do something about, is clean it up at least, so that people find it more attractive.
Why do people?
Well, on the way.
Number one, they want tax breaks, for X many years, Montpelier gives these out, Pownell doesn't give them out. I mean, realistically.
Yeah.
When it comes, they wanna go someplace, they want something for nothing.
Yeah.
And that, that's the people in Montpelier get that out. And, uh, I don't know if our guys up there are on the, on the same.
Nelson?
Well, Nelson, Sears, the whole bunch of them, uh, you know, they're the guys that can give the goodies out, and we can just sit there and put our sucker on up down, and that's about it. We have a good.
But that's not the role, it's not the job.
Supermarket is right for this area as well.
We got one.
Yeah, but it's not the, it's not the, if you really, it's really not the job of the planning commission.
No, no, I'm just saying, whether you don't like them or not, they, they're the best thing that came to town.
Do they have produce?
Oh, they don't have produce, they know they don't, but I mean.
Even if it was a small supermarket that came in here, it would do really well.
Mm-hmm.
People, you know, I have to go to Bennington, or I have to go to North Adams.
Like you.
It's a pain in the neck.
Mm-hmm.
I'd rather come down the road and have a supermarket in town.
I'd like it to be a cafe.
Pownell back when we had the.
Well, and you know.
We, we did have a pretty nice one.
I know, but this is now, and I think we need to discuss trying to bring these things in here.
You're discussing some that's been in business for forty-two years. I've had vegetables for years, and, uh, it's just gone by. Uh, they'd rather go to get it all at one time. Uh, I still sell lettuce, I sell tomatoes, I sell stuff like that, anything I use, I sell it. But I'm trying to tell you that I don't think that, uh, Pownell is, uh, pretty much as big as we're gonna get. I hope, at the Legion, we might start up a farmer's market, which would be good, we got a nice.
Also, it'd be great.
No, I've been in the, I've been in the Legion for forty years, we discussed doing things here, and, uh, we had a bank once, we had a bank here once, okay? And I think because a, a local girl was the manager, no one wanted to go in the bank, because they didn't wanna know her business, they wanted her to know our business.